And I'm now going to call the March sixth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners. And ask you to join us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The caller roll, Commissioner State.
I'm present, sir.
Commissioner Shane is present. We have a quorum. There's no executive session today. We're going to go right into our budget presentations. Today we have three budgets, actually two. Commissioner's office first. Um miscellaneous RSVP IT weights and measures. Then we have the treasurer's office. And then we have maintenance. I don't see maintenance on this agenda, gentlemen.
There. Thank you.
After treasurer's office.
Yes.
Okay, well, the last shall be first. Without objection, we're going to start with maintenance because John and Tara are here.
Yeah.
And the others aren't.
That's fine.
I think we'll get to everyone. Probably commission's last, but. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
John, take the seat there, John. Thank you. And the detail in the maintenance budget is in your budget book?
Yep. What page are we looking at? Let me show a tab. What tab, you know? This is safe time. No matter. Let's see. Next release. Did that already?
Okay, well, this is.
I got it.
Tab five.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Tab five?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yep, there it is.
My favorite.
Okay. John, the floor is yours.
They're over.
Over.
Well.
Fire away.
These are some of the things that we're asking for. Group two, our group magnets, permanent salaries, code one hundred. I increase it by two point two five. It was up to about a hundred thousand, seven hundred and seventy nine, thirty nine.
It says here includes ten employees stay present. So you have ten employees that are still in the staff.
Yeah.
That aren't max.
They'll be coming up for a staff.
One step a year plus. Okay.
That part of the contract.
That's pretty standard stuff, right?
Yes, standard, standard stuff, yeah. Now, the group longevity, I increased that by two hundred dollars based upon the employees' years of service. Now, the group for the rubbish removal, that's seven percent. Is about three thousand dollars. That, that's due to the prices that they're going to charge. They have a contract and they charge more money now than they did before.
That's called the bid?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been nice quite recently.
All right, so that's based on what you see to their raise?
Yes.
Okay, fine, that's true.
You got the air conditioning code was an increase of eleven thousand. That's for split fins and Rentham Superior Court. I mean, Rentham District Court for the jury pool room. That's what it's going to cost to have them put in. Uh, the elevator repair code is increased by nine hundred and twenty dollars per elevator contract. That's because they've gone up on their fees too. And pest control, that's seven hundred and eight. That's gone up like five percent, six percent, something like that. Group three, employee uniforms. We allowed. What is it? Eleven thousand? Eleven hundred, sorry. But for uniforms, for the vacant positions that we haven't filled yet, just in case we do fill them, we'll have the money to pay them. Now, doing that, I'm asking for is twenty, two hundred and eighty dollars for purchase the following equipment, vacuum cleaners, speed, speed buffers, hedge trimmers, lawn mowers, carpet cleaning machines, edges, and leaf tools. And it's about there. That's all, you know, the only thing, the increase that I'm looking for, I want to increase that code by two hundred and, two thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
That's for all the maintenance of the courts, right?
Yeah.
You know, keeping the courts clean and buffed and.
Well, it's the other, the other ones have, you know, seen their day, you know, the people, the speed buffers. They're not functioning anymore, so we're going to pick up a couple.
All right, so just for the record, oh, that's two questions.
Go ahead.
One would be politely, uh, is any of that perhaps items that could be put under the capital budget? That's the first question. That's a separate category for us. You know, this is good. I understand. The other thing would be, if Phil could answer this, since some of these, I know some of them would be used for the court. Could that be something we'd get reimbursed on?
Yes.
So it's just something to explore. It might kind of lower that number. And we'd request two thousand, but the net to us might be one thousand if you work your way through it. So two things to look at, that's all. I don't have doubt on the need for it, no question. Okay?
Yep.
Yep. Is that it, John?
That's it. So this page here is just stuff that we, money that we transferred around from different codes. Like an increase of, what is it, ten thousand? That was transferred for the rubbish removal. I think the contract we had with these guys were a little, it's a lot high.
So what happened when we did the budget FY twenty four, we didn't have a contract for a rubbish removal? So the contract got approved after the budget was already processed. So when it did get approved, we were short in rubbish removal for the year, this year.
Who's the contract with?
All state waste.
I thought, okay. And so, and I'm going backwards a little bit, but so you anticipate their increase or is that what they said it would be in year two of the contract?
So in FY twenty four, it increased, it increased by twenty, like twenty five thousand.
Okay.
So going forward, it's increasing by seven percent. So we're going to see the three thousand dollar increase for FY twenty five.
Okay, so that's a fixed number?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just checking.
And the snow removal, that's money we transferred out of that account to pay bills in the other account.
And it doesn't snow, right?
Yeah, lucky.
We've been very.
Very lucky, huh?
Yeah.
Amazing.
Hopefully we don't have any.
You know, in the town, in the town budget, probably some of you know this, I'm not sure about cities, but in the towns, that's the only item you can actually exceed in your budget. Yeah, so they always, they have tricks, they'll play it low, so, because they know they can always add it up to it. They can add money into it. That's the only item we can do that. Like outside the confines of two and a half, but hey, we don't even need it. Good.
Yeah, we're glad we had it.
I might have put my shovel away, I don't know. I don't know. I'm like, we'll be a blizzard next week. Hazards material?
Yeah, we took money out of hazardous material to pay for, uh, the rubbish removal. And the group building repair, we had to take money out of that too. It wasn't that much money, though. You're talking three hundred dollars. And, uh, the equipment rental, it's two hundred and forty three. That's where we just moved money around out of one account, one code into another code.
How many vehicles do we have as a maintenance department? You know?
Four.
Four. Four. What kind of shape are they in?
Pretty good. I had, I had one of the electrician's van, I had to put some money into that because you have to. The other ones are fine.
But it's.
They're all fine now.
They're in good shape? All right.
Yeah.
All right.
But, you know, we got the three vans and the.
So no plan to replace one of those on the capital budget, so.
They're very low mileage on.
Good, all right.
Not have that much mileage.
Good.
Okay. Just let's visit for a while. All those nicely laid out here. Everything's covered, right? In other words, cause of Quincy, not cause of Quincy, but we have bill permanent positions right up to the most recent one in Quincy, I think that we did last week.
Yeah.
I think it's an agreement in on it, but we'll cross that reason we can do it.
Yeah, the fourth position is in Quincy, from my understanding from John, is that they're going to move them out here.
No, whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
We haven't heard, well, actually, I should probably ask John, we have heard nothing about our ongoing relationship with Quincy, right? Where they haven't followed them.
I have an update for you.
Oh, okay.
Um, I spoke to Chris McQuaid today from the trial court.
Okay.
They do have an idea of what direction they want to move in with a vendor. They won't be prepared to sign a contract, uh, probably for another month, a little longer than I thought.
So they're talking about bringing a vendor in because they're going to be there longer than they thought?
No, uh, this would be a location, Joe, for them to go.
Oh.
Um, it was put up the bid.
Okay.
Month ago, they've been evaluating the responses.
Yeah.
Chris believes that, uh, they should have something to announce within the next month.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that is within the facility budget the commissioner should understand is it maintains, um, the level cost of, um, Quincy's, um, various utility expenses. We did not want to pull out, um, any portion of what was, what is a twelve month commitment. Um, we don't know how long the Commonwealth will stay in Quincy, so I've asked Tara to, uh, plan for twelve months next year.
Okay.
Um, but in the event that the Commonwealth moves out sooner, there'll be a corresponding savings that will, uh, realize in FY twenty five.
Okay, but my point is Quincy's been covered. We just had the senior left, Paige left at the beginning of the year.
Yes.
Whatever, December thirty first.
He's been back.
We moved someone up to senior. We don't backfill the lower place in Quincy.
We're holding, uh, up to five custodians pursuant to an agreement with ASME. Uh, until we close Quincy, we figure out how the.
Okay.
How the back.
It's all covered in here, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's all right. That's, that's my question about personnel. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm fixated on rubbish, so forgive me. I'm looking at the budget and in twenty two, it was like around twenty five, twenty eight thousand. Twenty three was down to twenty one, and then it jumped up in twenty four. So now from twenty four to twenty five, you're right, that's a modest increase.
Yes.
But what the heck happened in twenty four? And I was here for that. I'm going to ask, do you know what? Was that just the cost went up? It's like almost double.
Well, we had a new vendor too.
We put it off for bid.
Yeah, but I mean, that was the best bid we had back then.
I gotta check with Nancy. I think only one vendor.
One guy bid it.
Really?
Yeah, guy bid it. I'm not sure. I would have to check with her.
I mean, you know, I was here, so I should know that. But it's quite a thing you say, you say. So the other thing I thought about though, and I'll follow Mr. Cronin said Quincy's going to be off the books, which means we're not going to have to pick up the trash. Would there be a concurrent reduction if we, if we say that, hey, you know, we're not doing that court anymore, will we get a cutback on the price?
Yeah, I believe Nancy has it in the contract when Quincy is no longer a part of.
Can you check on that?
Yes.
Please. I'm just like, this is just a huge amount. It's jumping at me. I'm surprised you only get like one bidder, you know, this, it's crazy. Because most towns get maybe two, I feel like, maybe two or three.
I don't know who she sent them out to.
Yeah.
Well, is this contract the same contract we've had in the recent past?
Republic didn't bid on it?
I don't know. As far as I know, that's the only bidder.
All right.
Can find that out, but is, did we have the same company last year?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, they're who?
No, it was Cleanway last year. And this, this year it's all state waste.
All state, I heard it all state. No, just Mr. Chairman, I was, I was looking at the four year patent, and it's just because it's rubbish. It went from twenty three, twenty one, jumped to forty last year, went up a lot. And now it's only got the small amount, but that's still, we're paying almost fifty, it's almost double price, so. Interesting. All right. Oil burners are pretty much the same. The pest control is pretty much the same, more or less. Yeah, I mean, more or less, just in line.
Right.
It really is. That was my question, the question I had there. Supplies, things like that. But again, if you see Quincy goes off the books, there could be some extra things in there, that's all, you know?
The difference is the, um, the painting supply line, um, is usually two thousand. I increased it by three, it brings to five thousand, and, but I actually lowered, um, the building line by three thousand, so I'm not really, just moved it around. Because the painter has, uh, cost of paint's gone up and he's worked and been doing a lot of jobs, so.
But I ask respectfully too, on the last item we put in, which again, I'm not doubting, these are all good things, but is there a way to put a priority list? We're bigger than that. So if you said, look, I really need at least, you got, like you got high speed buffing machines, I know that means you need one or two. So, you know, or hedge trimmer versus a lawnmower, or I need the, I really have to have the vacuum reset. Maybe put it if you can.
Yeah, I can do that, but I know, have I written down that we need a four vacuums, um, we need two of the buffing machines for the denim complex, and our old one will go to Stow, and it's still in good condition, we'll keep it to Stow and.
Okay.
We're asking for, uh, three, um, trimmers. It's one for the complex, uh, what, two for the complex and one for Rentham District Court. And one, um, hedge trimmer, it's for the complex. And the lawnmowers is for, one for each courthouse. And, um.
Are they gas or electric lawnmowers?
Yes.
They're gas, yeah, sure. Did you look into electric?
No, I think the guys like gas, so.
Thank you. I see Mr. Cronin's back there. What's up, John?
Uh, so, uh, to your question, Mr. Commissioner State, the, uh, the capital items that move to any capital plan are typically any item over five thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, okay.
Typically allowed for partners to purchase incidental items like lawnmowers, blowers, and things that Mr. McGowan has just described within their budgets, um, as long as it has, uh, sort of a useful half life, so it, it doesn't fit usually a singular capital item.
Okay.
Now, if Mr. McGowan wanted to purchase.
Yeah.
Ten items that were five hundred dollars each, and they were going to be going into the various facilities, that could rise to a capital item.
Okay, so that's a group five, if I'm right, and group five fifty five ninety nine, you're going to read that right, five nine nine? So last year you got eight thousand, so this year you're requesting all these items, which is a slight increase of ten to two thousand. So again, what I'm saying is not knowing our finances, if we decide to level fund, you might have to cut that a little bit, so it might be, I don't want to cut all those things.
Yeah.
Might be helpful to have some kind of a fallback, like a plan B. Always have a plan B.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? That's all. I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against it. We're just, our day today is to gather information, but, you know.
Most important thing to get is, we need the vacuums.
Yeah.
They go, but they burn them out.
Yeah.
The high speed buffers, I mean, I have plenty of them around, but they're not all running. You know, whatever, wherever they need them.
Yeah.
We can always bring one from here. I mean, that's something that we.
Well, you know, you know it better than me. This is your job. I mean, politely, but if we said to you, because of the numbers, we're going to go with two thousand, you get a couple of hundred, you gotta figure out how to make it work, that's all.
That's all.
That might be, you can figure it out yourself. That's all. You know, we don't have, we don't understand the way I get it. And thank you, John, for pointing that out. You're right.
Okay, any other questions for John and Tara about the maintenance budget?
Good.
We're going to do something today with John on.
Yes, we are. To the right of Commissioner State.
Have something here.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So, uh, Mr. McGowan, it is my pleasure and the board's pleasure to present you something today. It's not a check. That could be, that could be on the, that could be on the knee.
I don't want it. The check is in the mail.
Like to read for the record, a certificate of achievement is something the board's trying to do. This day is presented, John McGowan, Norfolk County Commissioners Office, they're sincere. Congratulations to you for having completed twenty five years of faithful service in the Norfolk County Registry. The Registry of Deeds.
And in other.
Okay, all right. And, uh, in Infinity County, given this sixth day of March, it is signed already by Peter Collins, son of a gun, and we need to sign it, present it to you as a certificate. So we offer.
The check is way in the back there.
What about the thirtieth? Am I getting the cake?
Oh, boy.
Is that the actual date?
Ooh.
Thirty. Three more, five more years.
He's telling us, he's going to be here five more years.
And then he gets.
He's going to get thirty. If you're going thirty.
We'll put the cake in.
You'll get something more than that.
Five more years.
There you go.
Well, thank you so much for that. Appreciate it.
Good thing.
Time flies, John.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We're going to correct this as a registry deed.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, we're going to correct this.
That's okay.
Registry deed.
Now you're going to get a managed one.
I was going to say maintenance.
That's all right.
We just did one for the registry, Paul.
Let's leave, cancel those. Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, we'll get back to it. Motion to take this budget under consideration.
So moved.
All right.
All in favor? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
All right. Let's do the commissioners next.
Oh, big money for them.
Commissions will include miscellaneous RSVP IT, which will have Sam up, and then weights and measures. So John, if you can do miscellaneous RSVP and weights and measures, we'll just have Sam join you when you do IT.
Tab three, Commissioner.
Tab three, thank you. Take care. You bet. Thank you. Thank you.
The overall commissioner's budget for FY twenty four, excuse me, twenty five is planned to be approximately forty three thousand dollars more than in FY twenty four. Uh, the largest singular increase is planned for personal services, reflective of the two point two five percent quota, um, that's planned. Furthermore, in this budget, I just want to call out a nuance. You'll see on the personnel page at the bottom, um, weights and measures positions, of course, one represents our current FTE, Mr. Mullen. Um, the second one is a proposed new hire, um, as we have more communities joining the weights and measures program, we need more assistance. These two positions are going to be moved from the commissioner's office into their own budget, um, away from this particular one.
After, after twenty five, after this budget.
No, and we will reposition it for the final budget view when you see it later this month.
As a standalone?
Yeah, we're just going to carve it out as its own, we'll call it regional services. But I just want to call out the fact that weights and measures pieces here, there's a couple, there's one of the line items moving right over to that separate budget.
Okay, that's all right.
Overall, um, if you look at, uh, group two, uh, further on page, I guess it's page one, one and a half, um, you're going to see, um, a drop in proposed contractual service expenses. That's because, um, in FY twenty four, we paid out, uh, costs associated with, um, initiatives from the Abrahams Group, and also signed by design costs, uh, which I think were reflective of the improvements to the Walson Golf Course sign. Those were one time expenses, they're gone. So we're leveling back at thirty three thousand, nine hundred overall for contractual services in FY twenty nine.
That's a big draw, yeah.
Well, again, those were reserves, Commissioner State. Those augmented a cost in FY twenty four. We don't see coming.
Okay, yep, I got it.
Our, um, postage and office supplies are level funded in group three. Um, in group, uh, four, similarly, we've held the line on those expenses and office equipment remained at a thousand dollars. So overall, the commissioner's budget is straightforward. It reflects the, um, the wages at two point two five percent. Um, just be mindful that by the time you see a final budget, you'll have a new department, it'll be called Regional Services and a long queue weights measures. Um, under, there was one line of them. Oh, you'll see it in a minute when I go through the miscellaneous. Are there any questions on the commissioner's budget?
Yeah, quick question. So we know the cost of the, uh, seal and wait some measures, but I know also we generate fees from the towns. That to some extent offset that again, right?
They do.
So, um, I know we've got five towns signed up. We get fees from all them.
We do.
Which I'm sure helped offset that. Now we have a second person proposal. Do we anticipate signing up enough towns to kind of balance the book again?
Well, the, we get two fees. We get a, we get a one time sign up fee, which helps offset the cost of equipment. We've invested in the program.
Right.
And then we get a fee based on the number of transactions that they typically have. So when you look at some of the smaller towns like Rentham, it's a small fee, large towns like Franklin and Edum, larger fee. Um, those fees collectively right now, um, are almost covering the full cost of Mr. McGowan's salary, but not all the way.
Right, that's right.
It's close. When we get into the next round of communities that we know are in the queue, and they're big ones.
Okay.
That could easily cover the cost of this new position, to answer your question, where I'm Dedham and perhaps Braintree, we're working on those two communities. So
Okay.
we cannot take on any more communities until we bring on new help.
I talked to the Braintree mayor, in fact, just a courtesy call, and I'd mentioned that, and they were very interested in our program. So they said they might want to, you know, go forward. And I figured that, that that, those towns will be enough to generate revenue, so that's good.
Bill Buckley's going to be in, um, momentarily after I'm done to give you more detail on the weights and measures program.
Okay, great. All right, good. Thank you.
Any other questions on Commissioner, uh, excuse me, Commissioner's office?
I have a question. Just an inquiry. What is five two four one, education of employees?
Five two four one, that's, uh, usually the training that we send people to. Um, I know Michelle gets shrimp training and, um, our purchasing people get MCPPO training.
Okay, and so we spent, okay, nineteen, okay.
Is there any appetite, Mr. Chairman, I ask you this, uh, for looking at, I think I see an item, group four, association of societies? Is that like, uh?
What are we looking at?
Okay, I'm looking at, I'm looking at group four.
That's MMA.
Yeah, MMA? Know what that is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is the national, uh, county covered by that?
No.
They're not?
Oh, well, it, it can be, but it's not, it's not funded.
I think it's paid by the mass association, because we get all of these.
We get all that stuff.
We get their, here it is here, there's their bank. We get it.
No, if we want to travel MMA, we're, we, but the registration is covered, right? Correct?
Right.
So I thought similarly, if I wanted to go someday to a national, is that something that's covered?
No.
It's not?
No.
I mean, we have a category for it, five two eight one.
That's what I'm saying.
Which is out of state and then in state.
Okay.
And that's a good question. That, that's a hundred dollars and travel out of state.
Where's that? I didn't see that.
Can you go to Rhode Island maybe for a hundred, but you can't.
Which one was that?
It's right above it. We carry it. I'm, I'm looking, five two eight one.
Right, okay. So I thought maybe.
The next one's in state. I have a category where they've ever used it, probably not in the recent past, not the five years that I know of, the six.
Okay.
But we do have a category.
So putting a hundred in.
The only way I can go for a hundred dollars. All right. I mean, you can go to Rhode Island and maybe.
I went to a national conference once in Rhode Island as a teacher. It was a long time ago, but that was, that was a national, it was a chance to go, so I would go to that one. Anyway, I was just asking, I'm not looking to do anything this year, but it might be something, a flag, put down the road. I would like to, I think something to some value in going. So, okay. That was all I had.
Also in the commissioner's office?
Yeah.
Uh, if, if Commissioner stays, I'll say, I'm certainly.
I'll move, take it under advisement.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah, bye.
That's Commissioner's next.
Uh, the next is, um, following this budget, you'll see miscellaneous costs. Um, these are insurance, retirement, employment charges.
Okay, I see.
So I'll go through these briefly.
That's also under three.
We'll go through the highlights if you don't mind. Happy to answer any questions.
Group insurance.
Yeah. Our group insurance costs are going from four point two to four point four million dollars in FY twenty five. That is a modest four percent increase.
Okay.
Familiar with other communities that are seeing much larger increases, so, um, this is a, a scalable increase that, um, I think we can handle. Um, we are planning again to put a hundred thousand dollars towards our OPEB liability as a regular and recurring payment. Uh, moving further down on account five four one one, is a very large increase to our county retirement costs. They're going from three point two to three point eight three five. This increase is something that I'm going to speak to the treasurer about, uh, to find out if there are additional funds in the county's, um, uh, fund mix to help offset that six hundred thousand dollar increase. That is a substantial cost, and I'll be meeting with Joe D next week to, uh, get a better handle on how to fund that.
Workers' comp. Was that something they had talked about when they came in, with Paul Conis and Mike Trezor Bellotti?
I can't recall.
I think they talked about the, okay.
Yeah, he may have said that.
All right. It's big, that's huge.
Our workers' comp insurance is going down by about nine thousand dollars. All the other expenses within employment charges are relatively straightforward and the same as they were in FY twenty four. Risk management, next page. Um, our auditing costs are going down in FY twenty five. The commissioners may know that in FY twenty four, we had two different auditing services. The second auditor, um, we had to pay them for two fiscal year audits in one. That's why the cost seems inflated. We'll be returning to, uh, a fifty thousand dollar level for the FY, um, twenty three audit that will be completed, uh, at that time. Legal services are going up, are projected to go up twenty thousand dollars in FY twenty five, because that is the year of our collective bargaining, um, dialogue will begin probably in the fall, um, to engage, uh, the unions in ASME to negotiate OPEC agreements as well as, um, well, we're engaging the unions now on pack. Um, and that will consume legal services, but the, um, CBAs will go into FY twenty five and likely early twenty twenty five calendar year to, um, hopefully have new contracts in place by next July. So this becomes a, an increased cost, yeah, they expire June twenty five.
That'll be the next few years.
Okay.
No, it's going to, it's going to open up in twenty five, right? After July, we have to open up.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Um, the remaining costs under risk management are the same as they were in FY twenty four. Um, the RSVP program, which, uh, is a regional program, uh, will be looking to move this under the regional services line item, uh, once it's established. Again, funded at thirty thousand dollars. This is the county's offset to that federal program that Robert and Chris run for your, um, on behalf of your county. Um, the RSVP program, as you know, is widely respected and, um, much used here in Norfolk County. Much used here in Norfolk County, so it's a modest price to pay. Um, the weights and measures program, that lot, bottom line item, Commissioner Stady, I just mentioned to you. Bill's gonna come in in a minute and talk about the weights and measures program. In addition to the salaries going to the new regional services budget, that line item for twenty thousand dollars is gonna go to the separate account too, okay? You see it, says weights and measures.
Why is veteran services, uh, not funded at all?
We don't have a veteran service program anymore, Dale retired. He did, he went, he, uh, he retired from our services and then we offset. Um, a cost for him to help train two other communities, Avon was one. And I cannot remember the name of the other community, uh, might have been Stoughton, but he trained those R S V P people and he fell off our contract in F Y twenty three.
I don't know, I think, I, just my more personal opinion, I think it's a great service for us as a county. If we can have someone even on standby that could fill in as a veteran agent, I mean, to you. We got a lot of mileage out of Dale, did a great job, maybe there's somebody that retired. In that job and might wanna be on a county payroll for a modest stipend, just to have available. That could fill in if there was somebody sick.
We can certainly explore the, um, market for rejuvenating the program, I agree with you, it was a very well received program.
It was.
When Dale left, um, had an excellent exit with him, he, um, he did describe some of the movements within the market. Um, you may recall, it was hosted by Franklin, but he serviced, uh, just a few towns in Norfolk County.
Right.
And the services that he was providing were displaced by town R S V P people, he trained them. Because he was receiving from the work, right, so, but to your point, we never know, uh, until you ask, I suppose, if communities have looming vacancies. Or needs for this kind of service, and that's the regional space we wanna be in, so we'll be happy to follow up. See if there's something we can, uh, do on.
One of the upsides of both Commissioner Shay and I traveling around. The county and all these different meetings, you get to meet a lot of people and the veteran agent got such great comments.
Yes.
Great high marks, it's a great service, along with our seal of weights and measures and, you know, the report card's looking pretty good, you know. There's way, ways we can prove, but I'm saying that's a service that, uh, when I mentioned in Canton, how when the agent passed away. And Dale was there to fill in without missing a beat, that's an important thing, even though for a couple of weeks or for a month. To give a town to get someone in place, that's all, I'm not, Dale took over a whole job. I mean, he then served Avon and other towns, like you said, I would like to see a small part time person on a, a small stipend. That could like go in and help out a town, get through a couple of weeks or sort things out if someone was sick or else. So I think it's worth exploring.
We will definitely try to do that.
Hey, thank you.
I mean, we can always put it in, if we don't use it, we just roll it over.
Yeah.
I think it's worth looking at, without question.
Just wait, look at it.
I mean, you knew it was spoiled by Dale, he was so good.
Yeah, he's, is he really?
I, I don't think he's still, but he gave.
He was.
Kind of a guru, yeah.
Great guy, great person.
Uh, so we'll be moving veteran service line for the history. And the weights and measures five zero zero one off to the regional services piece when you see the final budget. Great, any questions on the miscellaneous?
No.
No?
I think that covers my presentation at this point.
Do you want Bill next or?
Uh, I know the treasurer was coming in at two, so.
Okay.
Get our.
We're gonna make that, we're gonna make that, why don't we go to Sam and then we'll go to Bill. Good afternoon, Sam.
Hello, I'm sure.
Sam is number four here, you got a letter dated. February ninth. Sam Evans C I O budget request submission, answer. Tab number four.
Yep.
I'm happy to report that I'm asking. Excuse me, for less money. And that is primarily because I T contracts, uh, are often multi-year. So there were some big ones last year that, uh, are not, don't have to renew this year. And the same thing, this year we've got a big one that'll go multiple years, so. The letter goes over all that, so I'll just take you through it quickly. Um, one of the other things I want to let you know, if you'll get a, get a chance at some point, we, because we put last year. Registry I T expenses into my budget also, we were changing the names around of the accounts. Because there'll be something like computer repairs and we had two lines, one for registry, one for. County and we've changed the naming of the, uh, account, so that it's easier to. Understand this year even than it was last year, so that'll be something, I don't know if. If you commissioners get reports of these things, but hopefully it'll be even easier this year to understand which account is for what, so. There's an example of that in the second paragraph of the letter. So, it says I T dash reg, if it's registry and I T C T Y if it's county, so hopefully that'll be much easier. So the overall, I think savings is around fifty three thousand or fifty five from last year, even though I in, I included. A fifteen to twenty percent increase in our, in most of the costs because of inflation. This year so far, about seventy five percent of the, uh, bills we've received have gone up that month. So, even with that increase, we was able to save money. Uh, just to go through quickly, on the salary side, there are no, uh, raises beyond the cost of living. I do have a line item in the temporary salaries. For Gary Lubin and Rich Kennedy at the registry, because they're helping us, as they've been doing this year so far. To continue to try to make some small improvements in the brown tech software. Because, um, they, both of them have vast knowledge of the system and the operations, they've been able to. Help Dan and I figure out where we can do that stuff, we do. Anything that they recommend, we do run by the register and senior management over there before we move forward with anything. Um, and we keep minutes of those meetings that we also distribute to senior management. Uh, everything else, though, is the same as it was before. Uh, in group two. We, I've requested less in some of the line items, those are detailed for you, hopefully you've got, you'll see the things if I won't. Take your time up doing there, the savings there are again because of. Those multi-year renewals that allow me to take that money off. And I also found last year, there were a few things on the registry side that I, that I thought were I T, but they're really more office expenses, like. I don't need to cover copier expenses, so that was just something that we were able to clean up. Uh, in group three, there's a tiny increase I put in in supplies and materials, we have, um. An office space down in the basement that used to be Mark's, uh, office when he worked over there. So we've turned it into a workroom and storage room, so they're gonna buy an extra shelf, but everything else is reduction in costs. Um, except for one thing we're doing in the county side, when the spending freeze lifts. Is we're gonna buy some laptops that we can use in case someone's computer breaks. We'll be able to run in a laptop in there when they, uh, laptop, when the spending freeze is lifted, we have to buy some more software. Put in those laptops antivirus, that sort of stuff, so that's an extra fifteen hundred in there, but again, it's an overall reduction in group three. Group four, I've taken some money out, uh, we were just talking about associations and societies. A couple of the guys have certifications that cost a little bit money each year, but we have fewer of those, so we've taken off money there. In group five, it is level funded, but we removed, uh, a little bit of money from. The registry amount because there was enough spending this year that we don't have to spend next year and we're gonna hopefully. Uh, be able to spend again when the spending freeze lifts, and a couple of items on the county side. So, should be a pretty standard looking budget for it, nothing major in there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Overall decrease, how much is that?
Uh, in, in the expense side, it's seventy two thousand, but it's around fifty five thousand overall. And again, that's with increasing the amount of money that I expect to see in invoices by about fifteen percent.
So it, it more or less covers the second person, weights and measures in a way, if we get the big picture.
Don't get too out front. I'm about to throw some cold water in that. Stand by, stand by.
Alright.
It looks like one oh eight to me, but again, I'm looking. Question?
Yes, sir.
Sam, do you discuss this budget with the register where there might be some dumb killing? For years.
So I, I. I sent him an email to see if he had time to discuss it with me, but I've been busy working on a grant and I think he's been. Busy with stuff as well, so we did not have a chance to discuss it, but I'm hoping that because it is a reduction. Uh, in his indirect cost, that there won't be any trouble in that.
Okay, my, my hope would be that nothing gets left or not, um, you know, we're not duplicating. Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't have enough, uh, time to get together to discuss.
Okay, well, let's see if we can.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll send him another.
I'm happy when we're making a hundred and five thousand, I don't.
Yeah.
Although John.
John's gonna put cold water in.
No, I think he's.
I was looking at the big picture, I was like, well, he's just going up, you're going up, he's going down, overall, we're okay, but, alright.
Does your cold water got anything to do with the, the I T department?
No, sir.
Okay, well, we won't talk about it until he's gone.
Right.
No, no, you let me know.
So, you've been here, what, two years now? Year and a half, yeah, about a year and a half, I had that down. Um, are you where, are you at where you wanna be for our department? Or do you see further needs for things? I'd say, I'm gonna go way out there, fiscal twenty six, do you see more growth, where, where are we at?
So there's a lot of stuff that, uh, we have in the, what we'd like to do, I have to formalize in a strategy that I can share with you. So it's been in that year and a half, I've really got a better sense of how everything works. Like, we, we're still trying to get the golf course underneath our network umbrella, we just did that work in January.
Right.
But Mark was just out there over the weekend and ran into a couple of other things, so there's a lot of little things, a lot of big things. I would like to have been a little further along, but it's the learning process. So, there's things we can do in an ideal world where everybody had money for the things that we wanted. Uh, we would have someone who's dedicated a little more to cybersecurity stuff. So that we could guard everybody, share that knowledge with the school. Uh, so there's things on the list, again, that I hope to codify in the next few months and.
Yeah.
Share with the, with the board, but yeah, we're getting there, we're making a lot of progress, thanks to Dan and Dallas and Mark. Um, and cooperation from everybody, so. Uh, we're getting that.
Good to know, alright. Oh, great job, as always.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, I'm all set too.
Yeah. Uh, will we take it under advisement?
Thank you. Back to, back to John.
Thanks, Sam. Mr. Coldwater.
No, no, that comes, that comes under the county director's updates. Mister Buckley will be joining you now.
Alright.
Okay, Bill, come on in.
I keep coming.
Sam's gonna relieve him on this one.
Oh, okay.
Did you read the Governor Healy thing today? Did you read the Governor Healy thing? The Governor Healy Zoom thing?
Oh, did I read it tonight?
Did you read it?
You know, I didn't. No, I'm sorry.
I don't know why.
I went right to.
You went, you said, hey, okay, we're here and let's go and.
You're right, well, we, that's a first, but we will be back next week.
I love it.
Assistant Director Buckley, what have we done?
Eight thousand percent increase in weights and measures. Um, three Mr. Chair, thank you very much for having me, excited to give a little clarity to our weights and measures program, I think. Because it's a new program, it would be helpful for us to start in F Y twenty four. Uh, and really, the, the mechanics of the funding for this, uh, F Y twenty five budget is predicated obviously upon, uh, twenty four, so. I have a couple of good things to tell you right off the bat, we were able to give back in twenty four, fifty thousand dollars of capital. Funding, um, in our last budget closing exercise. Um, which we were hoping for additional equipment through the capital plan, so that was unnecessary. So that helped us, so as we look on expanding, uh, we see that the program is doing very well, it's very popular. Uh, Bill Mullen would love to be here today, but he's out at a conference of weights and measures inspectors, are talking up the program and. And learning from his colleagues, seeing who else may be out there as, as we seek to grow, so. We're really at a point, um, in, in discussions administratively, that there needs to be a second human doing this, we, we have five towns now, it's really at the, the max. But those four towns were the sweet spot, we were able to, uh, take west within mid-year, which we projected to do. Uh, and we worked very hard to, to get them, uh, within the program, so. Uh, my request for you, uh, for F Y twenty five for salaries is the addition of a second assistant. Seal of weights and measures, fee amount of sixty thousand dollars, so you see the F Y twenty five. Uh, salary request goes from, uh, seventy five last year to a hundred and fifty six the previous year. As far as expensive scope, uh, last year, as, as you know, we, we began the program, so there are a lot of startup costs. There are a lot of things that are, um, equipment that need to be bought, but only really need to be bought once, these, uh, the weights themselves, as. You know, as a weight lift are, are pretty sturdy things and, and they will last us for a very long time. As well, the provers, uh, that we use for gas and the carts have long shelf.
There's a second person, I'm sorry, interesting, does that person need their own set of weights?
So I'll, I'll, I'll kind of get to that, so go through, um, so. I, in, in an overarching way, we looked at, we appropriated seventy three thousand, uh. Five ninety five in F Y twenty four, we won't expend it about five thousand dollars of that, if, if you look on page two. Uh, Bill likes to self style them, himself as a cheap Yankee and, and he's been very exacting in the way we, we have looked, looked at that, so. Um, we will probably use a portion of it, I'll get to that in a moment, of twenty four, after the spending freezes over. To perhaps outfit a second, uh, person's needs, but we're, we're, we're pretty good right now. So, because of that, we are taking, uh, fifty three thousand, almost, uh, fifty four thousand dollars out of our request. For, um, the expenditure category of weights and measures for next year, so we're going from seventy three thousand to. Only budgeting twenty thousand for next year. Um, so that'll be a great savings, and just to break it down, we did about fifteen, we've done about fifteen hundred dollars worth of fuel right now, middle of the year. Uh, a month and a half ago, we're expecting about three thousand. Uniforms are, we're gonna stay the same, uh, Bill's pretty well, uh, outfitted, so that would be for a second person. Professional associations, again, that's small dollars, a hundred and fifty, uh, dollars, vehicle maintenance. We have yet to expand anything on vehicle maintenance this year, but the, uh, the vehicle's taken. The other truck, but the, the truck's taken a lot of rides to Franklin, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, get some miles on it, so we think some tune ups and things of that nature, we're, um, conservatively estimating about fifteen hundred, uh, dollars for that. And about five hundred dollars for miscellaneous equipment, uh, and we've, we've baked in again, another contingency. Of about fourteen to fifty for that total, uh, twenty thousand dollars, we again hope to be giving. Some of that back at the end of, of twenty five, but we're, we're trying to be, uh, conservative as we, we continue to. To grow a, and feel out what the, the needs of the program are. To your point, Commissioner Stady, which is, I think, a great one, what, what is needed if we were to add an additional person and outfit them? Uh, one thing. Um, driven principally by the, uh, pot industry is perhaps a need for. Larger metric weights, because those things are weighed in metric. Using the met- metric system, many of the, the shops have smaller weights, we have a small weight kit. But some of these grow facilities and some of these large facilities we're seeing out. In the west of the county, a, a few of them emerging, they have some pretty big metric scales out there. Uh, and it can be done with the weights we have, but, uh, it would be good to get a larger weight kit. And that would fulfill, that would fill out our full series of, of weight kits that. Uh, Bill Mullen has at his disposal, likewise, uh, an additional, uh, gas prover that would give us four. Those are the large five gallon provers, they come in a big red, um, container, that would, that would be the perfect amount of. Uh, equipment for two humans.
Does the scale of weights get into, uh, marijuana, especially, say, balance?
If there's a scale, yeah.
Okay. So. They had a different agency for that, I could be wrong.
There, there are additional agencies that look at the, the business practices, but the, the weighing itself, the, their. Sole focus is just the, the machinery.
So any communities we have so far or whatever, they'd look at that as an additional thing, right?
That's it, so that, that's in. Uh, we also, we're looking for, and we've been pricing out a small storage shed for those gas provers, because obviously. We wanna keep them outside there, currently in the engineering, uh, little cabinet that they keep. Uh, they used to keep, uh, land stakes in, so, uh, we'd like to get Patrick a shed back at the end of this fiscal year, so.
So they physically be outside, you're saying?
Yeah, they, they would, they would be in like a little.
How much you get in for a shed?
Uh, about fifteen hundred, it's not a large shed, it would probably be the size of half this table, just to hold, house the provers.
Who wants a safe?
Yeah. Yep, um, so where, where, to your point, we're thinking about five thousand five hundred dollars to fully. Outfit the program within fiscal twenty five.
Okay, I'm not gonna put you in a spot, I'm just asking a question. Does any, does anyone know, so I just thought about John, who's here earlier, now you're here, with a new guy and a new person. What do they do about fuel, when they need fuel, they just go downtown and get gas? Or do we have a? Aggie, okay.
And we reimburse them.
Okay, so we have, uh, uh, gas.
Right, right.
Okay, and it's, it's that, so we buy the gas for everybody, more or less. Okay, I was kinda wondering about that, and then you, they get reimbursed.
And we sealed the pump too, so we're making sure we're not paying, overpaying for aggie.
No, that's good, so our towns have that, again, you can't have D P W. Okay, so, the aggie supply, alright, good, that's good.
So, um, so when we look at, uh, the, the requests for F Y, um, twenty five, our, uh, salaries are. Uh, one hundred and fifty six thousand eight seventy five, our expense is twenty thousand, for a total, uh, for the program of a hundred and seventy six. Eight seven five, that's sixteen percent, uh, higher than last year, but it's only twenty eight thousand, um. Dollars, hi- twenty nine thousand dollars higher than last year, so. So how do we, uh, bridge that gap, which would come to our last page, which is revenue? As you, as the director mentioned, we asked everyone to give us a ten thousand dollar one-time capital startup fee. So we've lost, uh, we, we get, we had four towns begin in FY twenty four, so we have, we, we got forty thousand dollars from that. That is obviously falling off the table because it's a one-time fee.
Right.
Those four communities did generate fifty two thousand nine hundred dollars from annual fee that will recur. So that money is recurring. Uh, in twenty five, we will get a one-time startup fee from Westwood. Um, and our annual fee will r- rise, um, to fifty six thousand from fifty two, because Westwood, although it doesn't have many devices, is now part of the program. So we'll, our revenue will ru- will be at ninety two thousand dollars for the, uh, fiscal year twenty five. So that helps us offset. It's not a.
Wait, you want to flip that here? Okay.
Okay.
Just for a second. So an, twenty four annual fee is fifty two?
That, that.
With the original four, right?
Right.
And then, and. Then annual fee is projected fifty six?
Fifty six with, with Westwood.
Okay, Westwood, okay. And plus the ten thousand.
For their one time.
Thing, well, so really it'll be, so it's really gonna be a net sixty six thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, for revenue?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, and that's down from ninety two the first year because we had those.
We had all the.
Yeah, all the one-time thing.
Yeah.
But if we add, do you foresee, I think you said that, I wonder what means we add, we might be adding more towns.
The, the goal is.
That's the whole idea about getting a second.
Yeah, and we have, we have the town we're in currently, who's very interested in them. We're looking into the south. There's some.
In Braintree, I think. Braintree's interested.
That might be a different thing.
Oh, okay. But I mean, so.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's interest out.
So each one would have to give another ten.
That's what sort of fees we get. And what we would have to do is, when we take a community, we look at their, um, their list of, of places. Every town takes a, um, an inventory of how many gas stations they have, how many scales, how many supermarkets, how many places needing price verification. So the number we charge them i- is derived from that. So denim is, is fairly significant. There's a lot of gas stations. There's forty oil trucks of denim, um, based here. So each one of those needs a, a pretty, um, intensive inspection. So that's, it's a large number. So, uh, the denim revenue, I think, will be close to, and probably exceeding, uh, Franklin's number. It's, it's bigger by an order of magnitude.
To another question related to that. So we know we have twenty eight towns, right, in the county? And yet I think in a couple too, there are people, like towns that have their own person. I can't think of one I ran into, but it was one of the ones in the caucus. They were like, oh, no, we got this guy, doesn't it?
Medfield, Mills, Medway has one.
They have one person. So is there.
Tyrese as well.
Well, you would know better than me. I'm wondering, what towns are probably not going to be looking for this? You know, and then what towns might be in the bubble? So actually, we're, again, I like, I asked Sam, where, where are we looking at? We're looking at making this program, five, ten, fifteen, which, you know.
I think we could get to twenty in, in five or six years, probably.
Really?
Um, it's, it, it really depends. Many of the communities, especially on the periphery, uh, Sharon in Bellingham, for example, they have retired sealers who are continuing to do the work. Sharon, it's about twenty working days a year. Um, Bellingham, I think, will probably be similar. Uh, we know those people. They have great relationships with, uh, our, our staff.
Might even share.
Yeah, uh, but, uh, we, we know from our dialogue with, to Sharon as an example, when that person eventually retires, they know where to find us. And we're very, um, persistent in reminding them. Likewise, if should, uh, the communities of Medfield, Mills, Medway, who are working together, they have a, a single shared person, who also is a, uh, food service inspector. If that person should move on, we know we'll, we'll both be sitting in my.
I think it's, I think when the word gets out.
Yeah.
Which Quincy has?
Yeah, but they have their own.
They have their own.
Quincy has a full-time person. He used to have two, but they only have one, but he's got the whole equipment in a truck.
Yeah.
And it's all computerized. I mean, it's big. Actually, Quincy's, the Quincy sealer has been helpful.
Yeah, he's the, he's the head of the state association.
He's the head of the state association, so he's explaining all this, so.
Good.
You know. And as long as I remember, the Quincy sealer used to do Braintree on weekends, but I believe Braintree's, that's probably in the seventies and eighties since I lost it quite.
Well, I mean, we have, if we get to twenty, that's a pretty good number.
Oh.
Very good for a regional.
We get to seven after this year and then you, you know. But if we make, get the word out so that these towns that are using a part-time or a person who's also a food inspector or someone near retirement, when they go, they might wanna, wanna presentation and take a look at it. I think that's where the growth is. I don't think Brookline Quincy, well, if Braintree came aboard, it would really be large. I mean, when it's next.
One, one of the other factors that, um, emerged early, we haven't heard much about it since then, are some county, excuse me, communities outside the county. We're kind of curious about our program. Border towns that are in the same boat that Bill described. We haven't really engaged them, but as Bill described, if you build it, they will come as this program becomes more viable. I think it's about our time before we hear more from the bordering communities outside the county that may want in.
So can we do that? I suppose we, we take students from out.
I mean, I, I'd be willing to look at it. We crossed that bridge. We'd probably have to get legal counsel, but I'm more worried about the county right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then one of the things you'd have to evaluate is that one of those communities was in Bristol County, for example. We'd want to check with our Bristol County administrative people, make sure that.
Right.
I mean.
That kind of.
It makes a little.
You know what I mean?
Is there a meeting coming up a little, guys, next month?
I'm, I'm thrilled that we got, we got to five already and it looks like we're gonna get to seven.
Right, no, it's great.
And we look at it again, I mean.
Again, we're traveling around and when I mentioned, it gets high marks. The people are very happy about it, enthusiastic about it. Good, you've done a good job.
It's.
Done a good job.
We've, he's done a very good job.
I, I appreciate that. And I think, when, when we talk about how, how we want to grow regional services in a wider way.
Right.
Um, when we, when I meet with the managers, I ask you, wha- what's the thing you don't talk about? What's the thing that is the last in your mind? And weights and measures just happened to be that, because the state shifted where they delivered services. Everyone said, why, it's on my desk. I don't want to worry about the stop and shop in the center of Canton. Got a lot of stuff going on. And we were able to, to meet that need. So I think we, as we think about regional services going forward, we, we continue to ask our, that question, um, for other things. But I think that the managers, the other thing we found that, now that we are talking about this, a few of our communities never charged. The state was doing inspections for them. One in particular, which I, which I won't out, uh, where you do not live. They looked back, they hadn't charged a business in five years. So they left thousands and thousands of dollars of revenue on the table back almost a half a decade. And that, um, so we're now helping them re- look at their fees, raise their fees, um, and, and generate more revenue as well. So I think all votes arising in this program, we're excited to see it continue to be successful.
So I know treasure boys waiting, but so in summary, you're recommending we grow by one.
Well, go by one.
And, uh, budget will go up by, what's the increase in the budget?
Net increase.
Net is. Well, we can't say net increase, but the, you know, the increase you're looking at is.
What's, it's about twenty nine thousand.
Twenty nine thousand. Off set by that money and all that. Um, is the, why, I'm just curious, the difference in the mon- one is, is he three-quarter person or is he half-time or is he full-time? Will this be a second full-time person?
That's correct.
Why is the number different than, uh?
We get less money.
Though, he'll be making, he'll, he's making less money for a number he doesn't know, one. Bill will be dealing principally with the scheduling and okay, where are we going today? If you go into Bill's office, he has, it's a, it's a huge wall full of every device i- in the county that's his responsibility and in a large calendar of where he's going to be at any given time, cause he, he deals directly with the scheduling.
So I, that's a tough question.
And he's also.
So is he, is he gonna be his supervisor?
Yes.
And then we get into a whole, is there a need to give him a supervisor?
And, and that's why the.
That's about it.
Bill, Bill's salary i- is, is a good one for, for sealers.
Okay.
And that's how we were able to get him. Uh, this, that salary is a, is a good one.
Right, so it's second. Male or female will report to Bill?
Yeah.
Not you.
And he'll be taught from ground up.
Okay.
Cause the statement, as a matter of fact, the state meeting's going on right now. Cause Bill's in.
And to your point, we, we believe, uh, we've had, like a starting sketch with Bill about how, how that would work if we would need a second truck. Uh, that might be something if capital money became available, we would ask for, but Bill thinks, especially for the first six or eight months, um, if you have two people, if you go to Wegmans, there's about nine scales right next to one another. They can go together. They can do each side of a gas pump together and they can just, uh, create efficiencies by working in tandem. So they can just move through, uh, the work faster, uh, together. So that'll be good as well, especially for a new person, you know, just sending someone out. Um, they would be directly under Bill's supervision. So we've got a good plan, we think, and we're excited to see.
Sounds good. Room to grow, and that's good.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Excellent, very good. And will we take the, uh, budget for sealing away from edges? I agree with that.
Well, she made the second in all favor, aye. This is.
If I may.
I'm glad, John.
Uh, very briefly, before you bring the treasure, and I just want to call your attention to one item, as you see in the budgets, we talked about this previously, but Sam Evans, working with our consultant, has, um, apparently found a solution. On the salary pages, any salary page, you're gonna see employee IDs. Those are placeholders, um, put in there, um, as sort of a mechanism to shroud the names. We're not planning to show names in the budget any longer.
Oh, okay.
But the, the name that's in, or the ID that's in your budget right now is just a placeholder.
Okay.
Um, Sam has identified through our consultant at Abraham's, an employee record ID number that is within the Tyler system, that is not relative to social security numbers, which was the other number. So you'll be seeing these record ID numbers pop up by the final budget when you see it, um, in three weeks. It's a, it's a way to track the position to the person without revealing the name and exposing it to, um, bad actors on the internet who look at our budget. So.
Is that gonna be across the board for our budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. All right.
Okay.
I'll talk to the schools about how they need to.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. I like that.
Thank you.
Next is a treasure, not a plenty treasure. Treasure, Baladi, come on up.
Oh, no, no, no. Don't do that.
Oh, I have a friend that found out.
Tabby?
Tabby.
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 Tabby. Hi. Oh, hiya. Oh, and you?
How's it happening?
Always a pleasure. First of all, it's been a, uh, pleasure working with all the commissioners and your staff, particularly John and Bill. Over the past few years, we know it's very challenging. We know that, uh, funds are tight and that you guys have done a great job in terms of, uh, setting priorities and staying within a budget. Hopefully, we'll find some type of relief in the future. And I like to think that we have, uh, kind of done our part. Uh, it's, I don't know if it's unique, where it's a challenge, but in general, it's not common that an elected official, in essence, has kind of three bosses in one hand in terms of the commissioners. You know, May is a more autonomous. They work with city councils, uh, and, but you're also elected and you have your own responsibilities to, uh, in different ways to the voters in Norfolk County residents. I think we work well together in that we respect sometimes that there's a gray area in terms of, you know, what is my, uh, level of independence uh, versus how much I need to, uh, dovetail into what you guys provide for leadership. And the budget process is clearly, uh, the greatest, uh, example of that. That being said, I, I really appreciate the cooperation we've had between our staffs and you folks likewise. So, yeah, uh, thank you. FY twenty five, we're looking for six hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and ninety eighty, six hundred and nine thousand ninety four six dollars. It's a fifteen thousand dollar plus increase. Uh, if you just take the two point five raises that staff get automatically regardless, uh, that would, that's twelve thousand. So we're talking about a three thousand dollar difference increase. And I'll just explain where we're at, and I'll leave it to your judgment in terms of, uh, what you need to do after this hearing. So the parental salaries reflect a twelve thousand, twelve thousand one hundred dollar increase due to the two point two five percent increase in salaries. Budget item line item budget, uh, fifty two seventy five. Repair of office equipment has been reduced from five hundred dollars to zero. Printing and binding services increased by three hundred dollars due to increased costs with storing payroll workers with iron mountain on vendor. Computer supplies have been decreased from six hundred to zero. Office supplies have been increased by six hundred as a result of that. So we're just basically consolidating two line items. Uh, there's, you know, each one, there's no longer a need for two separate supply codes. The associations and societies has been increased by seven fifty dollars. I, I, I just recently became a member of the Trez Association, which is the Norfolk County Treasure Association. Actually, we're in a meeting today in, uh, that honestly, I, up to this point, I paid for it on my committee, cause I agree I can. I'm thinking, Mr. Chairman, it's an association.
Yeah.
But, you know, it could go either way.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's up to you folks.
I think it's.
Yeah, but I know things are so tight, I'm, I'm.
Can you have like a yearly conference?
Yeah, I figured, well, oh, yeah, yeah. They have, well, they have some training in August. They have a yearly meeting. I don't think they have a conference. They have a couple of meetings a year.
Those are worthwhile. I'm a big.
No, no, it's, it's, you know, especially when you're looking to restaff.
Pick up one little thing, it's, you know, it's good.
No, you learn a lot, because.
You do.
Cause I have two roles here. Chair of the board.
Yeah.
With Josephine Shea and Paul.
So we're talking about five, four, two, one associations and.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of a nominal.
Well, I don't think you should pay for it.
It's just a little bit of a, uh, give us a little latitude to join a few associations that.
Yeah.
That benefit, uh, the office. And for me, as I look at restaffing at different times, cause people might decide to retire, it's just good to know who's out there in the towns in those roles.
Right.
Who would consider coming and work for the county.
Yeah.
Uh, charity boards have been increased by a thousand. Okay, so.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's, that's just covers out, uh, expense for, uh, Joe and I in terms of bonding. Newspapers and, uh, periodicals. So this is something where, you know, maybe I have to kind of advocate strongly around the next few, couple of weeks if you make a decision, but clearly in this official capacity, it's, there is three hundred increase over last year, uh, because of the, uh, state house news service. That's, believe me, that's not cheap. But again, it keeps me in the loop in terms of what's happening legislatively, who's out there for personnel, uh, what the governor and the legislature is proposing, uh, for policy changes that may or may not affect us overall. Or what, you know, sometimes.
You may cover a whole.
You get it real time versus waiting for the glow.
Do you get that, John?
Is that daily?
Huh?
Yes.
Is that daily or are we? Yeah, it's just, it's continuous. Oh. John, maybe there's a way that we can, uh, combine it so that it's, it's a lesser cost between us. I mean, I, I know when I was in the sheriff's office, we, we had different subscribers or people that can access it. Miscellaneous, okay, current charges and obligations. We're gonna decrease that by a thousand dollars. You know, we use Hilltop as a financial advisor on our bonds. Uh, there's a lot of expertise down there and, uh, really to the judgment of Joe Dioria, who makes, uh, a number of these calls in terms of what he needs for expertise around him and what he has developed his expertise over the years, uh, to make those, that decision. So that is it. Uh, it's, it's not a big budget. It's six hundred thousand. I mean, it's a, it's a big budget in, in general, but relative to the overall county budget, it really is a, a big slice. And we try to keep the increase of the budget as low as possible over the past three years. So whatever they're looking for more right now, we understand what our role is here. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask a couple questions?
Sure.
I'm afraid. So, uh, earlier in our budget process, uh, we noted a, a significant increase in contributory retirement. Uh, it went up about six hundred thousand dollars. Right, that's happening through, uh, every unit in the county. Is any reason for that? So that's a, that's a function of, uh, a couple of things, you know, we, we depend on a certain rate, uh, in terms of investment, seven point five percent, okay? Uh, some people think that rate is a little bit high. Uh, if we lowered it as a board, in terms of the retirement system, we would necessarily increase, um.
The individual contribution.
For each community. You know, so it's a balancing act. At some point.
It's like the tax rate.
Yeah, one or the other.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're trying to become uh fully funded with the next five years.
Which is good.
Statistically, we could push that out a few years.
No, people are happy about that.
We don't, yeah.
It's good.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, it's not gonna be zero, uh and then the accessory tables involved, you know, we have folks that assess that every couple of years. So could be used out of that. And uh and just the cost of, you know, people with disabilities, uh some of those costs are appeared strictly by each unit. And then, again, certain costs of spread out through all the forty units because of the uh.
Okay.
The uh investment returns.
Could the other elephant, that it's just a, it's gonna be a vein of us, but, you know, we serve all sorts of trustees at the Aggie School.
Right.
And the Aggie, um among other things in our county, but the Aggie is in desperate need of some new buildings or some.
Right.
And we can't do anything because our bond debt is so high.
Right.
So what, is there a way that maybe, not now, I'm thinking about maybe this summer proposing a meeting of the minds, you know, where we could just get a coffee, have a meeting. Is there some way we could put our heads together to figure out a strategy to lower our bond debt to the point where we can borrow again? Or is that just something as pie in the sky? Is there anything we can do between us?
Well, I mean, obviously, we have pretty favorable interest rates, right, John, right, so that's not gonna change. Uh possibly paying down the principal, but that's gonna be new monies coming in, but maybe just.
Take a mortgage first, double payment, the mortgage, like lower it down, yeah.
Right, and then uh I think thirdly, uh maybe that's a function of a little negotiations with our bonds people.
A lot of the debt that the county is holding for the agricultural school is actually quite favorable.
Um because of the rate.
The rates were locked in before the rates increased, so they're they're in a very favorable position right now. I don't know if Joe refines, refinances to any of them, Michael, but the last time I looked, uh they were all very favorable in the.
Right, you're no refinancing.
So it'd be hard, I mean, if you're gonna consolidate them, you may be chasing a larger rate.
Right.
That's just. So and that's why I wanted to get dialogue going, because people keep on one hand, we have the other shoe on our foot, they'll say, why are we doing this, why are we doing that? I figured, if you have a mortgage rate like right now, two, two to three percent, you don't wanna refinance, you'd be paying seven, doesn't make sense, so.
But I think it's worth getting together and talking about, uh you know, maybe banks should be more favorable.
Southwest, are they still on board? We have Southwest.
For the boys?
Yeah, our advising, what the heck is the woman's name?
Uh well, uh.
Cinder McKerny?
Yeah, Cinder McKerny, yeah, McKerny, yeah. Cinder, right.
It could be, I mean, I know we have Hilltop, right, and I don't know if they've.
Maybe we should have a separate, have them in on a day of our meeting.
Right, yeah, so we have Hilltop, yeah.
An update.
I don't want to.
I think, I I think in the budget process, we should get an update.
It's good for the budget process, I don't want to put you on this, Bob, you you know about anybody.
But let's.
But I think at some time, I hate to have them say, you can't do it, there's gotta be a way, if we could just talk about it.
Well, why don't we pull them into a meeting?
Sure.
And we'll have discussion of what's changing.
We should talk to them once a year during the budget process, even if nothing comes.
Yeah, that's the thought.
Alright.
You know, now we we got some, hey, what can we do here, what's the rate, what are we looking at?
We'll reach out to them if you want, and then in official capacity, you can invite them to a meeting.
Yeah.
And then we'll all be there.
Yeah, that'd be good, that'd be good.
If you wanna set up a subcommittee, you know.
Well, the fair to the chair, I mean, that would be something, I mean, you wanna make sure the school's present, you wanna have, obviously.
No, we.
You know, a lot of, you know, the key people, but.
You know how we end up.
I don't wanna get a big deal, but I'm saying, just to get some brains going.
It's worth a discussion, I mean, we're having these discussions anyways.
Right.
But it's better to have it uh with all the stakeholders, because you guys can make a decision.
When you had that meeting, when you brought in uh, and you brought in Paul Cornish yourself.
Right.
And there were a couple of other people, like the name just gave me, but about the whole thing about paying down, you know, the uh the uh disability, what we had to do. That was a great meeting, and that makes sense, and now we know the goal is to get it done.
Right.
Before twenty thirty, good, right, there's our target, you know, in five years, like you said, you know, to get it done, right?
And then it'll be in essence, a dramatic, significant decrease in your contribution.
Right, and then that means.
But it's not gonna go away.
No, it won't, but here, I'm saying, in the bigger picture, if say something, I know as a homeowner, if something gets dropped off, I had a kid going to college, my youngest. Suddenly now finally it's all done, that was like found money, we all go, you know what I'm saying? So suddenly it's like, oh wow, now I've got this money, where can I put it? I can put it back in my house, or maybe get something, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So in the county, you're the one that has all that knowledge.
When do you want to do that, and maybe next couple of months?
Well, yeah, see, let's put it as a summer item, let's get through the budget, let's go through our budget, always that town meeting, it's like, I'd love to have it maybe in the summer or, you know, or in the fall, you want to kick off in the fall?
Maybe we'll schedule it.
Let's try to get to it in the summer, just because.
Might be a good time to do it.
We'll definitely do it, we'll get them in, John, we'll set that with you.
Sure, I can work with Joe. August, August, maybe, yeah, July is tough, probably, maybe a couple of.
What do you guys think?
Like.
August is better than July, but uh let's make it an item at the meeting, or right after the meeting, or right before, anyway, you want to do it.
We kick some dates around.
Alright, we'll do it.
I think it's important to get started, and to talk about that.
Because we, again, we're working in areas, almost in asylum, we should be sharing with you publicly in a meeting like this, even though these discussions are going on every day, but something where people can.
Appreciate that, yeah. I'll I'll reach out to John and see if we can schedule something with him.
Like I said, you know, uh Joe's uh. My mother-in-law passed away.
Yeah.
It said, I condolences to fam, his family.
He's dealing with that today, otherwise he would be here.
Right. You know, you know, we know that he has uh thirty years of institutional history here and that he's, he's a guy who knows all the bodies of.
Right, right. Well, we're not looking for an immediate answer, I decided to throw it out there.
No, we'll get that done.
Get some good dialogue, otherwise your budget looks good to me, just.
Okay, you guys decide in the final analysis.
Yeah. Uh move, do we take this under advisement, Mr. Chairman?
I agree, and uh motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
We're gonna take the treasures.
Appreciate it.
Twenty five thousand under advisement, thank you, treasure of a lot of it.
Yeah, Mr.
Go ahead, John.
As I, as I come towards the uh consolidated county budget in the next couple of weeks, there may be some movements within budgets, transfers to consolidate line items, I talked about consolidating some of them, so to the extent they may impact the treasures office, I'll let you know.
Yeah, and some of these savings that you see will will reduce line items uh to almost zero, it's in contemplation of uh and also recognition that over the past few years, you folks have uh centralized a lot of the uh services, like IT.
Right.
So even though we might be making a cut, to a certain extent, there's definitely gonna be savings there, because it's centralized, uh but it does shift over to you folks. But I think in the long run, uh you you know, you have less duplication. So, you know, again, that's to the spirit of, even though I'm elected separately than you folks, I understand your role in, you know, and how we fit into that. And I'm, you know, I mean, I'm sure if you go to some counties outside of the England area, th- those county administrative offices are very centralized. You know, so uh we see where you're going.
Okay.
And I I appreciate that, we all do, okay.
But, thank you.
Really, of course, wait.
Yeah, thank you.
Take care. How's the new, uh, how's the movement in the uh retirement thing?
Uh it's it's getting there.
You're gonna have a farewell party in Canton before you leave?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Where are you going, Mike?
Uh we're going to uh Norwood.
Oh, Norwood, is it Westwood?
No.
I thought it was Westwood.
Is it Westwood, we we we're just fine, we got, we're we're finalizing it right now, we got a couple more, but.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is it on?
I think it, what?
University Abbey, go that way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I meet them uh tomorrow, so we're this close to making final, final, final.
That's good.
You know, we're still negotiating, so I wanna be careful not to.
Alright.
You know what I mean?
I thought it was done deal.
Well, it is, but nothing signed in this, we're still working with potential uh landlord uh for more favorable rates.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, always a pleasure.
God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you around about.
Good to see you.
Take care.
Okay, this concludes the uh budget sessions for today.
Wow.
Is this it for the year?
It is, if I could just give you a couple of milestones, so this afternoon.
Go ahead.
Mr. Antoska posted uh as required, a public document, uh it is an unbalanced budget, but after receiving the report of all the county budgets to date, um and I know you understand that there'll be some modifications made to them. Um with the current position of projected revenues, basically from last year untouched, and the current spending, we're projecting a two point two million dollar deficiency. So I have to get to work over the next couple of weeks to address that, close those gaps, and present a budget to you on March twenty seven. Um on which time you will be uh taking a vote. Um followed by April tenth, which is the Finance Committee Advisory Board down at the Aggie, um to have a hearing on the FY twenty five budget. They will vote on the FY twenty five budget in May, mid-May, on the fifteenth. Is that your?
We're keeping to our calendar.
Right, yeah, right.
Good.
So, and I expect to be before you in three weeks with a balanced budget, I'll probably talk to you individually and let you know how things are shaking out. Um but obviously, some things have to change and uh I'll work with our staff to get that done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, thank you.
Okay. We're back to the regular agenda on the March sixth meeting. We're at number five, public comment. Each week we have a public comment section in our budget, in our in our uh agenda, is there anyone out in Zoom land that had any public comment at all? Director Conan, have you heard from anyone?
No, sir.
Last call for public comment. Seeing them, we'll go to number six, all business, I have no all business today. Number seven, personnel matters for consideration, there are three. Commissioners, Dave.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'll move the following for approval at today's meeting, at the Norfolk County Agricultural High School. First one, through approval of contingent employment for Bridget Nelligan of Amerton Mass as a student worker at the Ray State at effective date three twenty five twenty four, so moved.
Motion made in second, all favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Second one, a notice of contingent employment for Joshua Morissette of Foxborough as a student worker at the Ray State at effective three twenty five twenty four, so moved.
Motion made second, all favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, registry of deeds.
Yes, sir, one is a notice of registration for Louise Pisano of Westwood.
That's resignation, thank you.
It says registration.
It's resignation.
Oh, okay, I wonder where that was. Okay, thank you, I will move that, notice of resignation for Louise Pisano of Westwood as senior clerk at the Ray State at effective three eight twenty four, so moved.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote, number eight, payroll expense warrants.
Sir, you have four? I couldn't just.
Yes, John.
The commissioners had a um request for posting from the registry of deeds recently, it was our hope to have that before you, after we clarified some missing steps in the hiring process, we're still waiting to hear from the register on approval of posting and process to bring that person on, so uh we were hoping to have it ready for you this week, we've worked with the registry to achieve that as soon as possible, still waiting to hear from them, thank you.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
I have a long list here, uh warrant list at three six twenty four, I move approval of the payroll of the county in the amount of one hundred and forty nine thousand, one hundred and seventy one dollars, seventy four cents, so moved.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Next, I move approval for the payroll of the school, twenty four dash thirty five, receives eighteen, the sum of four hundred and six thousand, two hundred and ninety six dollars eleven cents, so moved.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next, we will approve for the expense for the school, twenty four dash oh nine, the sum of fifty nine thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, ninety two cents, so moved.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And next, I will approve for the expense for the county, uh oh three dash oh one twenty four, I will approve of fifty thousand, seventy eight dollars, fifty three cents, so moved.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote.
And here's two, I don't recall seeing before, uh move approval of twenty four dash five, US Bank interest, eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty three dollars thirteen cents, so moved.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye.
Interest payment?
What is it?
Okay, and last one, uh twenty three dash four, move approval of US Bank interest payment, amount one hundred and thirty one thousand, four seventy one, eighty eight cents, so moved.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye. That's complete, sir. No offer, right?
No. No, I'll I'll deal with that just now.
Payroll expense, that includes, concludes that, number nine, a report on American Rescue Plan of twenty twenty one, John.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, uh as Commissioner Stady just indicated, uh no ARPA this week, but we do have three uh grants that are approved, ready for review, I'll be getting to those over the next couple of days, Waymouth is one, it's a total of just over three million for the aggregate of uh those before us, there are approximately two or four more right behind it, um at level two and moving, so there may be more than those three before you next week, um so look forward to those. I will also, I I previously mentioned to you that um the ARPA program, the ARPA closeout program is underway, um we've begun receiving closeout plans from a host of communities, um they were due March first, we had just over fifty percent um submission from the communities, letting us know their intentions. Um we'll be sending out a reminder for those uh plans to be submitted without delay, so we can start working individually with each community. Um the amount of work that'll be involved with um addressing each community's profile is extensive. Uh reflecting that, the Clifton, Larson, Allen Audit Firm has submitted a rate increase request to all the counties, um anticipating the increased workload. Um the number of hour, billable hours that they expect will be in front of them over the next uh two to three years. Um I will be submitting a closeout plan impact memo to the commissioners next week, so you can assess what this means in terms of um uh the 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 number of hours and and work that's involved. The uh the communities are aware that over the next several months, they'll, they're gonna be asked to revisit, there are allotted funds, um in some cases, they may not receive additional funds if they haven't satisfied um the plan to convince us that they have um identified contracts and processes to obligate before the end of January, uh the end of December of twenty twenty four. So um we'll be having a meeting with Mr. Galvin, Mr. Buckley soon to delegate the work and begin the process of um of dealing with the closeout plan, so more on that later, I'll get you all the memos, so you can see what that means.
So that includes American Rescue Plan, but say, there's no number ten, there's no ARPA warrants.
Next week.
Number eleven, we have no bids, however, and number twelve. We do have a contract award, Nancy.
Right in.
Nancy will be right in, here she comes. Nancy, tell us about underground storage tank removal in the Agricultural High School.
Um it's recommended to award a contract to the Dowling Corporation for the underground storage tank removal at the Agricultural High School. Their base bid being twenty thousand five hundred, the school has chosen to add alternate one, an additional cost of thirty thousand five hundred for a total contract price of fifty nine thousand dollars.
And these are, these are experienced people.
Yes, yes, we'll check off, we'll check their reference, their references.
Okay, okay, they need all the criteria.
Yes.
So, okay, any questions?
The worst name to come in here?
Dowling Corporation, D O W L I N G.
D O.
W L.
W L.
I N G.
D O.
And where are they?
Oh, Dowling.
Dowling.
Oh, Dowling, okay.
Rent them.
Okay.
Oh, okay. One town.
And I also.
Rent them.
Okay.
And then I have the contract pages, and I also have the notice to proceed, and this contract won't be commencing until the seventeenth of June, when school is out of session.
Will it be done this June or July?
Yes.
Maybe August, before September?
Before September.
Okay, good, any other questions?
No, sounds good, I'll move the approval then of the uh the bid for the underground storage tank removal at the Norfolk County Agricultural High School. Be granted to Dowling.
Corporation.
Corporation.
It's for the total amount of fifty nine thousand dollars, as outlined in submitted in their bid.
Now, second, motion made in seconded to remove, uh to award the contract to remove the underground storage tank at the Norfolk Agricultural School, Dowling Corporation Rent from Mass, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thirteen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a few items, uh several weeks ago, the chairman, excuse me, the commissioners received Norfolk County Sheriff Patrick McDermott, uh he provided an update on the work and services he's performing. Uh subsequent to that, he submitted a letter to each of you on March fourth, uh in it requesting consideration for ARPA funding. Um the letters which have been made available to each of you detail two different programs. Um one is to provide funding for a trailer that's used for mental health and medical staff. Um replacement of an existing one that is beyond useful life, the other one is to um stand up a Hope Center program um through the sheriff's office, which can extend um services and potentially reduce the risk of recidivism by collaborating with courts, police, town governments, and at-risk youth and at-risk adult programs, so this particular item is before us. It's my recommendation to inform the commissioners that due to the position we are in ARPA, and I'll give you a more thorough update next week, the um this re- this request, which uh totals one million dollars, is a bit beyond the commissioners um allocated, uh remaining allocation of um ARPA funds. Um if the commissioners have any feedback they'd like to share, we can certainly work with the sheriff's office to modify the request, but um I know you want to put this under consideration, but I also want to introduce the receipt of this publicly and let the sheriff's office know that you are pondering next steps and uh be my hope that by the next couple of months after we figure out where communities are trending with their closeout plans, um how much funding might be available for his request. But at this time, I can tell you there's no capacity within the sh- the commissioner's office to support that at this amount.
I I appreciate the sheriff's requests and the tech, the items he's trying to tackle are absolutely critical. Uh you know, for the health and well-being of people in our county, uh the only thing I would say is, yeah, at this time, perhaps not doing any action yet. As we see what we might have for revenues that may come back, but already, again, I go back to what I was saying, we've been all over there, we've been, I'm in seven or eight towns, and there's more to go. And people are asking about, now, can we get more on, you know, is there any extra money out there, so I'm not saying disrespectfully get in line, but there's already towns clamoring for more additional ARPA that they heard this town wasn't using or whatever, and then we may even have some things ourselves that we need to kind of look at, so um I guess the bigger question I had, and again, I'm probably looking too far ahead, but I'm wondering if you could, at some point, I asked Bill this, could we look at, all right, we know we've given out a hundred million, which means roughly there's thirty six, thirty seven million left over, or maybe, uh give or take, if we could take a look at what's in the portal, what might be acting on, and maybe at some point, obviously, our own administrative fees. And then, is there a way to see? obviously, our own administrative fees, and then, is there a way to see, are we looking at maybe having ten million left over? Five million left over?
That's, that's exactly the exercise that the closeout plan is seeking to achieve. Our goal is between March first and June thirtieth.
Good.
To assess all communities' programs.
Okay.
It's intensive, and then by July first, reissue new contracts, because they expired June thirty.
Right.
With the approval to either proceed as agreed.
Right.
Or with new grants that will allow them to spend them out through, obligate them out through December of twenty twenty-four. So, that's exactly what's happening.
So, something like this, we can't act on it at the moment.
It's, it's a little early, you know, I can, right, that, that, if, in the event, you're absolutely right. We don't know how much money will be left over. I'm, I'm starting to trend towards little or nothing, but community plans that are coming in are saying, we're done, we have fully obligated, we're planning to fully obligate the funds, and we want more. So, the message you are conveying is very true, they're all looking for more money, so there's that. The other side of this is within the three percent grant holdback that the county initiated. There are funds that are identified for county projects. The commissioners have approved almost three million dollars worth of programs to date.
Right.
There are a couple more that we have to put in the portal, one is for the schools, Kent Hall, and one is for boilers here in Norfolk County. There, there's not a lot of capacity within our three percent to hold a million, we actually don't have a million dollar capacity.
No, stay with me for a minute, probably, if I could, stay with this for a minute. So, this, we have to hold the same standard. If we're telling Canton or Quincy or Brookline, you gotta get it done, we too also have to get this done. So, if we have something going on at the Aggie or us, we have to make sure those things are gonna be completed.
Correct.
You know what I'm saying? The same standard of what you have to do. But I can say, I won't say it, I know in one of the towns I visited, that they still have over a million dollars in quicks. So, there's, there's potential money coming back. They may not be ten million, but there could be some money coming back. And again, this has to be considered with all the other towns, they're gonna be asking for help, you know, but.
It's the commissioner's choice, we're gonna be, we've already announced to the communities when we started ARPA that they have a certain allotment based on population. And in the event that they declare that they have excess capacity, they wanna send back, yes, we can consider that for a grant like this from the sheriff's office, which we're not part of that allotment. The other, the other bucket to consider is the county bucket, and we certainly don't have a million dollars for it. So, we have some work to do to figure out what the surplus looks like, what options the commissioners may have.
Yep.
But as I said here today, I don't feel comfortable advising you to consider this application until we learn more. It could be a couple of months.
Oh, yeah.
And we'll let the sheriff's office know.
Police say, no, we got the letter.
They're going under advisement.
Right, take under advisement. Actually, we might see the sheriff this week, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, moving on, just a couple of other items under facilities, I received an update from Terra on Monday. The Devon District Court elevator, which you may know you spent a lot of money on upgrading, is nearing its final installation. The next move is to have smoke detectors installed, and then the state has to come and inspect it. So, we're looking to expedite the opening and activation of the lift. I know John's been in touch with Sheriff Palmer, excuse me, Judge Palmer. So, we're hoping to have this operational within the next several weeks. The registry of deeds, the electrician's completed all exit sign activations in the building, and he's going to Superior Court next. In Stoughton, a new flagpole has been installed, I believe you know the other one fell.
Yeah.
Broke. And we're waiting for the trial courts to authorize additional work on a heating pump over in Quincy District Court. You may, a heat pump obviously is a, is a source of heating ventilation for Quincy, and at this point, I know the state's evaluating whether or not they wanna sink money into some of these improvements or try to limp along with what they have. It's their call a hundred percent, we're happy to do the work, then get reimbursed. It's up to them to authorize it in the first place. Rhythm, the septic was pumped out based on complaints of odor, this is a longstanding issue, and Rhythm with that issue. But they've been active, our friends in facilities continue to service the courts quite well. Per Commissioner Stadia.
Ran into a Rhythm, a person who worked at the Rhythm Court, this is a good story for everybody here. The first time I was elected, I did a tour with John McAlvin, and I remember that lady, of course, I can't say her name, but I remember her. And she made a comment, that's the Rhythm Court is doing well, and they're very happy with all the things that John and others are doing, so, good sign.
Yeah.
Could you get good feedback?
The Commissioner Stadia had asked about the EV station program a couple of weeks ago. I reached out to the vendor last week and asked for any updates on the program as it relates to the new state program. He responded to me yesterday, but I was out sick, so I haven't been able to write back to him, but I'll have an update for you shortly on that.
Right, that's great.
And just a heads up for the commissioners, I do have meetings with Labor Council and asks me next week to discuss impact, potential impact bargaining on the employee handbook.